Welcome to the Tuesday, September sixth, thirteenth, two thousand and two, Skokie School District Seventy-three and a Half Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Member Nelson, here. Member Wolfinger, here. Member Mercer?
Here.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Here.
Member Miller? Member Jacob?
Here.
Member Amawala?
Here.
At this time, member Latasha Nelson will read the land acknowledgement.
I'm sorry, acknowledgement statement, land acknowledgement statement. At Skokie School District Seventy-three point five, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Sioux, Hoshuck, and Winnebago, Maya, Mayami, Potawami, Peoria, and Kekopu Nations. These nations were forcibly removed from their territory, traditional territories, and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of these possessions upon which our school rests. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous peoples, and we take this first step fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you. At this time, for all those who are willing and able, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? At this time, do we have any public comments?
Hi, I'm Emily. So I just had two quick things. One, and I know like it was brought up by other parents for lunches, but I don't know if twenty minutes is really enough for kids who are standing in line to then sit down and eat lunch. I really think that it should be twenty minutes from the time all students are seated, just to make it more fair for everyone. And then I'm super disappointed to see that enrichment is now only two instead of three sections because it increases the price, which means some parents will probably have afforded going once, but not now going. I don't know how to explain it the best way, but so instead of it, you having like three classes throughout the year, there's now only two, and they're longer. So for parents that maybe would have put their child in one because they could afford it, but not quite on the list of unable to afford, it's more expensive. And so I don't really know if that's the best equitable way to go about things. And also, it would be so great to see other actions in there because it's the same thing. So my child who has done chess is not going to do chess again, or I cook, not again. And it's like, you're limiting, oh, it's the same exact thing from this, from the first one to the second one, and then the next year, and the next year. So it'd be really great if we could maybe get different actions throughout the year so that you have more possibilities. So that's it. Thanks.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rachel Van Whoos. I missed you all all summer. I was working nights. I would have been here. I was watching on YouTube. I'm quick gonna echo what she said about enrichment. I think a lot of families like over the winter maybe not do that session because they're traveling. And there would, it would be nice to have other options and on other days. Like my daughter really got into Spanish last year, but now Run Club is on Mondays, and that's the only day Spanish is on. And maybe we could offer different languages. And, you know, we've kind of stuck to the same offerings for a long time. This year is this year. It's probably already set, but maybe look ahead to next year. I'm back to talk about outdoor field trips and expanding the options again. I would love to tell you about my favorite places. First, all fourth graders, I learned this program is back. Obama had this program. It kind of went away under Trump, and then it came back. Where all fourth graders get a year-long pass to national parks, all the national parks and lands and waterways and things. Our closest one is just the dunes. I was gonna bring the pass in here and show you, but the dunes is an amazing place. I mean, look at this, the native plants, the trees, the bats, the mammals, the Junior Ranger Activity Guide, like, some kids have never even seen that there's these giant sand dunes just an hour away, you know? So I would encourage all fourth graders and the fourth grade teachers to let them know about that program. But close, close to us, the places that I would suggest, like starting closest, is the Talking Farm. It's on Howard Street. It's the least expensive field trip you could imagine, and they want us to come there. Our co-teacher for the Middleton Garden Club is from the Talking Farm, and it's literally our neighbor. I feel like all the kids should see it. The Grove, Kennicott's Grove up on Milwaukee. It's so enormous and expansive and boardwalks through the marshes and animals, rescued animals. River Trail Nature Center is just up past that. Elawa Farms up in Lake County and the Wildlife Discovery Center there is an incredible place. When you go southwest, and I'll stop shortly, but there's Sagawu Environmental Center and the Little Red Schoolhouse. And the topography out there is just insane, you know, and the Calumet Sag Channel and the canals down there. There is a lot down in the southwest area. And there's literally a Forest Preserve of Cook County map for every area. And that's just Cook County. And, you know, going north to Lake County, there's even more prairies and bird sanctuaries. And I just would love to see, it's like great for the preschoolers and kindergartners to go to Emily Oaks, but we've kind of all been there, right?
Mrs. Van Whoos, can we ask that you give us those resources? Public comments need to be held to three minutes. It sounds like great information, but if you can compile that for us, that'd be great.
This is all, I'll give this all to you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any correspondence?
No, President, we do not. Vice President, we do not have correspondence.
Do we have any for your request? At this time, I will open the floor to the board members for staff recognition.
I'll start, and it's, one of my, my kids, they're my children in fourth grade, and he had a difficult sub, as sometimes, you know, we do. And, but what I thought was so stellar was the reaction of not only, just the immediate reaction to making sure that those kids left having a good day. So even though there was a difficult moment, it felt like the new STEM teacher at Middleton swooped in and kind of, he said, "We had STEM and therapy today," you know? And I just think that, to me, that's exactly that mindset that makes good educators, is it's not about getting our content or our subject. That's not the primary thing. It's making sure the kids in front of us are safe and have their needs met. So thank you for prioritizing that in that day, and a thank you to our new STEM teacher.
I'm not exactly sure who the teacher is, but whoever's in charge of the patrol, the patrol kids, you know, I think, I haven't seen my fifth grader so happy. And he talked about, you know, leadership and being a leader, and I think that that was such a wonderful, wonderful thing to offer to the kids.
I just wanna give a shout out to the Student Services Department, particularly Special Education, the responsiveness and all the work that they put in and, you know, as, and, you know, I'm sure all the parents appreciate it, and I sure do. So I really appreciate all the correspondence and all the work that they do. So, thank you.
I have a few people to thank. This is not staff, but during Curriculum Night, I wanted to say a big thank you to the kids who were so wonderful volunteering and kind of guiding us. Parents who were lost and don't know where all the rooms are necessarily, and they were so helpful and eager to help us out, and they would just jump at you and say, "Do you know where you are?" Of course, we don't. I also wanted to say a special thank you to everybody who got Middleton ready post-construction so that the kids can get there on time. I know there were some hiccups, and everybody worked so hard. We joked around about going in ourselves and cleaning it up so that it was ready, but it was done, and we didn't need to do it. And another person who, whose name we don't hear, but has been a tremendous help with the Policy Committee is Kelly Hutchins. Kelly spends a lot of time keeping us focused, keeping us on track, making sure that we're getting things done, we're getting through our press packets. So thank you very much, Kelly, for, for kind of pushing us along and guiding us. And we forget to often thank the people behind the IT who are waving to us but are here very quietly and doing all of that work behind the scenes. So thank you for that.
I'll go next, and mine's pretty lengthy. So last month, I gave a shout out to Karen Hayes for all of the wonderful work that she's done for Powers, with the Power School. And Karen Hayes is so gracious that she could not take all of the credit for the, for the work. And so she sent me a lovely list of people that I learned a lot from her email, the people that help all make these things run. So I want to make sure that those people get the proper as well. If I mispronounce any names, blame it on my pronunciation and not on my heart. She wanted to make sure that Ruth Sinker was given credit, Ariat Zamudi, Zamidi, okay, Sue Denser, Joan Eisenstein. Front Office Team, Roxy Sides, Heather Rubio, Ashtar Nahas, Gayconda, Helena Sheikh, Melissa Arkin. And I think those are all the people in, in the message. But she wanted to make, let everybody know that they had, they were instrumental and very helpful for registration and getting kids ready to go back to school. My fresh shout out, I really want to commend buildings and grounds. I hear the bathrooms are amazing. And so thank you for all the work that went into that and all the work that goes into keeping the buildings up and running. I also want to shout out to the principals in all of the buildings for Curriculum Nights. I got to attend two Curriculum Nights this year in two different buildings, and they were amazing. Being a teacher myself, I know how sometimes things can feel like a waste of time, and I feel like all the curriculum myself ever attended in this district, they are timely, they are purposeful, the information is very useful. And the teachers and the admin team just do a tremendous job. And so thank you for a job well done. And then last, I'm going to send another shout out to the tech team. And I'm gonna send a shout out to the tech team because all of you listening at home, this wouldn't happen without the tech team. But also something that people may not realize that's an integral part of the tech team is that we now have the ability to live stream events in this district, which is something we didn't have, you know, prior to my tenure on the board. And that comes to you too because of the work of your tech team and the admin, and they're the people that you don't see. And so I am guilty of missing out and not acknowledging them in the past because, you know, you just assume the work gets done. But fairies don't come and do the work. The tech team comes and do the work. And so thank you to the Technology Department, the tech team, and all the people that helped make this happen.
Yeah, definitely claps for that. I'll keep mine brief, and when you go last, everyone's already shouted everyone out. But so I also wanted to give my shout out to Karen Hayes, and I'll just throw in her title to make it fancier. She's our Operational Services Coordinator, also known as the Everything Person, because she truly wears so many hats. And we recently rolled out halal and kosher lunches for our students, and there were a lot of questions that came in from families, which was great because it shows that people are invested and paying attention. So Karen really helped streamline all of that correspondence and send a great informational note out, which I really appreciate her doing on top of what she does. She also leads the PTO, which I had the pleasure of attending a PTO meeting this past Tuesday, so last week, and which leads me to my second shout out, Ruth. She was so excited because she asked me if I noticed something about the weeklies this time, and I said, "Yeah, I only got one email about it." And she was like, "I know," and she was so excited because to consolidate all of that information and make it easily accessible for our parents and families is something she was so excited about. She's been working really hard with everyone else to ensure that the information is as clear as possible on our website. So definitely check that out. And finally, I also wanted to give a shout out to the tech team. One thing I'll add, just to add some color, is when this meeting ends, a lot of us go home, a lot of us shut our, you know, live streams off, but the tech team is back, you know? Unplugging our microphones, putting our computers away, and ensuring everything gets done. So major kudos to them, and I may as well clap again because they deserve it.
At this time, I think. All right. At this time, I'd like to make an emotion to adjourn to the public hearing on the budget for school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Seconded. Motion made by member, by Secretary Amawala and seconded by Member Jacob. Throw a call. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the budget hearing. I did prepare a little song for you guys. I'm just kidding. Dr. Hightower and Dan threatened to kind of get one of those hooks and pull me off the stage if I did that, but, exactly. So I'm gonna keep this kind of brief tonight because we've done the tentative budget presentation already. It is a little bit different, which, you know, doesn't always happen for a tentative budget to a final budget. But we know more about those fund balances from the last presentation, that we are only supposed to collect what we expend for our, from our taxes. And if we collect something and we don't spend it, then it's subject to property tax appeal, and we could lose some of those funds. So we have a little bit too much in some of our fund balances. A lot of it related to COVID and transitions and administration and just things not being done that could have been done in that timeframe. And also, there's been a lot of back orders and delays and all kinds of things that have caused this. So the little bit of change that we see in today's budget from the tentative is just really related to those fund balances and trying to whittle down that deficit that we knew we still wanted to spend some of it. Okay, so this has been in all of my presentations, and I just like to always remind everybody that what we're doing is about being responsible to our taxpayers and academic and fiscal solvency. So we have to have fiscal responsibility. Everybody knows that's a key part of our strategic plan. It's really not gonna go away. But beyond just fiscal responsibility, we have to have academic solvency. So we have to know the money that we're investing, it's being invested wisely, and that we're getting a return from our students and our parents' success with the money that we're spending. Also, it's important to remember that all of the opportunities for our kids are really affected by what resources are available, and that includes their teachers, their buildings, their facilities. And then the administration has really worked to keep this in mind and align it to our strategic goals and all of our district priorities, all of the work. And it's, it's taken a lot of work from a lot of stakeholders. Everybody you see in this room and tons and tons more people have worked on this budget this year. The goal has been to make it accurate, and our last amended budget from last year did finish with the revenues and the expenditures around ninety-five or so percent. So we'd like to hit that same thing this year. The goal would be not to amend, but of course, we'll talk more about what that would be. And so the timeline was, we did the tentative budget on August ninth presentation, and this is our public hearing to adopt our budget. And if we did do an amendment, we would need to do it by June thirtieth. So I really think I kind of missed this step on all of my last budget presentations, and I think it's probably one of the most important steps. So our district priorities, which are in alignment with our strategic plan, they're the same for everybody and every department. And welcoming environment is, can be reflected and seen in this, can be seen and reflected in this budget, as well as hiring and retention and acceleration. For work, welcoming environment, you'll see a lot of investments from those fund balances in buildings and grounds. So we want better conference rooms that, we don't have to spend a ton of money. We're gonna do academic and fiscal solvency. But we want rooms to be beautiful, inviting. We're gonna get that furniture that we've been holding off on for a few years. We're talking about going out to bid for a nice electronic sign outside of McCracken here that would give more information to our public and communicate, working out our entrance areas or our welcoming areas, just to be more comfortable for people. And so all of those things, and also just repairing things that are in disarray. Hiring and retention, we're making investments in starting salary increases. So we did that last year in our IFT contract. We're doing that, we did that in our McMia certified contract. And we really tried to not only make it equitable for our current staff, but to make us more exciting of an opportunity and more in alignment with other districts around us. And then acceleration, teacher zero-based budget requests. We did those this year, and we did that to look at what teachers were asking for. Because we know a lot of times, teachers, they, they know what will move their kids forward as far as resources in the classroom, and they're really the ones. So I think we heard a lot of feedback that teachers were pretty shocked that a lot of their requests were actually approved. And we are doing that wisely because we know some of the money in our ed ba, in our ed fund needs to be spent so that it's not up for property tax appeal, right? So just that little bit, we're gonna invest it in our teachers and what they want, and what they think is gonna change their classrooms. And then we're gonna look at that at the end of the year and say, "Okay, what did work and what didn't work? And how can we make this work better for us in our future budgeting processes?" Because zero-based might not actually be the best thing for us. So we're gonna work together with our teachers, and I think that, that will go forward. We'll always continue to work even more and more with our teachers on what they think works in the classrooms. All right, so last presentation, the treasurer hadn't closed the books yet, and we were not able to give you an exact fund balance, but here it is. So we're down about, I wanna say it's like less than a quarter million dollars it was from last year's fund balances. And if you remember, in last year's amended budget, we projected a two million dollar deficit. So because we were academically and fiscally responsible, and we worked with all of our stakeholders to make wise decisions, we were able to whittle that two million dollars, I think it was like two point something down, to just over, just under a couple hundred, or over a couple hundred thousand. This year, we're gonna project a bigger deficit, but also hoping that it will be spent wisely, and it won't be quite as gross as we see. So we have thirty-nine million, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars in our fund balances, and we have a very good credit rating because of that. We do not need to borrow cash as the cash on hand is adequate, is adequate for us to be able to cover our bills. As we know, the Cook County taxes are gonna be a little bit late, and so we just want to make sure that we have enough money in all of our fund balances to cover all of the monthly bills that we have, and we don't have to borrow. So that is true for us. Our revenues this year are a little bit up, which is a great thing. We still have some of that ESSER money to spend, and that's also a very good thing, but a lot of those grants are gonna be going away. So it's important to know that when we do get grants and like ESSER that are temporary, we have to make decisions with spending that doesn't need to be renewed afterwards, or find ways to make it sustainable. Twenty-seven million, four ninety-three, three fifteen, that's what I'm projecting for our revenue this year. And really, it's still mostly coming from our local taxes. It's seventy-eight point seven percent coming from our local taxes, eight point one percent from our state, and twelve point two from our federal. When you see those others up there, that's like our registration fees, our enrichment fees, our lunch, you know, like that we sell à la carte if we do that, and just little things like our rentals of our property. Anybody have any questions so far? Okay, very good. So our total revenue, I like to break it down by fund. This one's a little bit different than we've seen in past years, and there's a very important reason for this. Last year, we did the levy different, and the levy is a year behind, so it's affecting this budget, right? And so the levy put the money in the ed fund, and that was because if we were putting money in other funds that were already at those high balances, right, like the IMRF and the Social Security Fund, Fund Fifty, we're not allowed to spend that on anything else. So we're just building a balance in there that's not gonna be spent, right? So what we want to do is make sure that we're, we are asking for what we're spending. So if we are expending it, then we're requesting it in our, in our property tax, taxes, and then levy, I'm sorry, property tax levy, and then we're making sure that it's spread out in that correct way. There's no limit on the ed fund anywhere, so anymore, so that's really the right way to do it. Anybody have any questions about, about that?
Yes. Thank you, Samantha, for again explaining the difference between taking money from one fund to another. I love that we always reiterate that point because it seems like such a no-brainer and a missed opportunity to not do that. We're really losing money on the table, and that's what's allowed us to make some of the exciting investments that you alluded to earlier. So just like to emphasize that point again. My quick question is, do you know what line item forty is since it doesn't say?
Oh, we're gonna have to fix that. It's transportation.
Transportation, okay.
Yes, sorry about that.
No, no problem. And then would you be able to just articulate why debt is a factor for revenue?
Yeah, so we collect, we levy the debt exactly what our bonds are, so we try to make that a nice even one. We usually just levy exactly what we're gonna be paying in our bonds, and we still have two different series of bonds that we're paying.
Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? All right, we keep it moving. So also, now it's time to look at the expenditures, okay? So this year, it's up a little bit. I'm asking for thirty-two million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. For our size district, for our number of students, this is actually of, and the number of buildings that we have, and the age of our buildings. This is actually a very reasonable request and in alignment with many budgets of districts that are comparable to us. It is a little bit more than we're used to, but we are spending it in the best places. Again, that goes back to our priorities, right? Our teachers, our staff, and our buildings and grounds. Here, you'll notice that I'm expending most of the money out of the ed fund. And the other funds that are a little bit higher up are simply just operations, really. And then a little bit in capital because we know capital is related to the operations of the buildings and grounds. Moving quite right about long, I like to do it by object because it's important to know what we're spending our stuff on, our money on, I mean. And so salaries are forty-four point seven percent. They're actually down. They're actually down a little bit even though the salaries are up, but that's because we're spending more money on supplies and non-capitalized and capitalized equipment. So if you remember from last year's budget presentation, or it's something I like to point out every year, most school districts spend very little on non-capitalized equipment, capitalized equipment and supplies. And those things are going to be a little bit up this year. We're going to be investing again in buildings and grounds and in our classrooms. The ed fund, it's really important to kind of look at, at that fund because that's really where we're spending all the money from. And then the O and M fund, a little bit deeper. And so just in the ed fund, we're at about 56% in salaries and then 9% in benefits, pretty much in alignment with, with our past. You can see supplies are up and again capitalized equipment is up. That dues and fees, that's really like the tuition that we pay to NTVSE or for a lot of our special education students. So if you guys see dues and fees, you might see some dues or fees for administrators or staff, but you're mostly, the 99.99999% of that spending in that account is really around tuition for our students at private facilities. And then the O and M fund, so this is the one where it's up a little bit this year. We usually spend about $2 million and we're going for $4 million. We're going to take that $2 million that we were advised when we did the fund balance calculation that would be possibly up for grabs, right? And later future property tax appeals and we're going to invest it in buildings and grounds. Here, you'll see purchase services 35% and then supplies 25%. That's both up a little bit and that's related to those capitalized investments. Non-capitalized equipment, capitalized equipment, and that includes our new trucks, which we have. And I think our team is really excited about that. They're doing great work and I'm even more excited because they've been saving thousands or hundreds of dollars every other day by not renting trucks or doing all kinds of cool stuff. Yeah, so and all kinds of great rewards have happened. Okay, before I move on, any questions about the expenditures?
Are some of these funds up a bit because they're not offset anymore by like grants that we may have received in the last couple of years?
Definitely, there was a few million dollars in ESAR difference and I think that really makes a big difference. But then also just the percents will be a little skewed because of the spending in the other areas like capitalized equipment and supplies because that went up, even though the other amounts are still kind of higher than they were last year, it's still percentage wise is, it's kind of like working out, so. And we were talking about 50 to 60%, I think this was in this one. We were talking about what's the optimal thing for salaries, right? What's the optimal percentage of your budget for salaries? And we were talking, I was really concerned personally during a lot of the negotiations because, you know, really it's, it's very important to me obviously that we don't overspend as you guys know. And I just wanted to keep that around the preferred number. And that's 60%. It's just under that. So in essence, the reason I bring that up is that all of the hard work that was done by everybody to create equity and these different, these increases in starting salaries for our educators and our staff, all of that work still fell within the right reasonable best practice range for our salaries. So that is a really good plus. And what that tells me is that, well, we have to be better with our money because we have a deficit and over the next few years, we have a lot of things that COVID has caused and beyond, inflation, gas prices, all kinds of stuff, worker shortages. With all of that in mind, we should not have many rifts or cuts because of budget because if we keep that number right around there and we just increase our revenue and do a little bit better, we're feasible, we're okay. And so that's important because we don't want to walk into a situation where we're investing in our salaries and then three years from now, we can't keep up with it. So, so I think this projects that we'll be okay. And so now moving right along.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the previous side Samantha, the one about, yes, by object, this one?
Yep.
This is, oh, sorry, I thought that was me. Oh, no, it's all good. This is like a logistical question, maybe it's just my lack of knowledge about O and M. I didn't realize that we could pay out salaries through the O and M fund. Could you speak a little bit about that?
Oh yeah, absolutely. So Mr. Kerrigan's salary, we have our, you know, Chris, Christian Splinski, his salary, all of our custodians, they should come out of O and M.
Got it, that makes so much sense, thank you.
And I think in the past, I've seen where districts, you can put them in the ed fund. And now that there's no cap, some people will consolidate everything. But really, we have that higher balance in O and M and it's easier for our data and our tracking, so there's really no reason for us to move their salaries to another fund.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions? All right, moving right along. So the surplus and deficit, that's what everyone really wants to see. Now remember, it looks a little scary, but last year it was a $2 million deficit that we projected and we ended at just a couple hundred thousand. Really hoping that this is going to be a mild deficit in the end. It's definitely not going to be a couple hundred thousand. We're going to, we're going to take that $2 million from the O and M fund most certainly and most likely another million or more, a little bit more from the ed fund. And it could be all of this, if you're approving the budget, it certainly could be this whole deficit. But we are going to work really hard to be smart in our spending and try to get that down. From the tentative budget, it's down about half million dollars and it was kind of up and down over the last month as we really worked with everybody to figure out what was accurate. Sometimes your budget will change throughout the year without an amendment, but that's really just related to grant spending. So if there's a grant amendment, another grant, you might see, you know, the overall expenditures or revenues go up a little bit or fluctuate during the year, but for the most part, this is what it is, right? Once you approve it, unless we amend it, okay? So ed fund is going to be in a deficit, O and M is going to be debt, transportation, IMRF, capital improvements, everything's going to be in a deficit this year except for TORT. TORT's going to have a couple hundred, a couple thousand, right? Extra that'll go into our fund balance. And so if you look at the ed fund, it's going to be about a million and a half down. For O and M, it's 2.6 and I want to point that out. Again, that's $2 million that we talked about, a spending from our fund balance on O and M, but the other 600,000, that is the money for that furniture. All of that furniture that we've been sitting on and holding, wanting to spend that, it's about $550,000, a little bit more, that's been put in the O and M fund because it was better there than in tech. In technology, it wasn't going to help our fund balances to write themselves, right? And we just needed to get it, we needed to have it done. So that's what you see there. Debt is going to end a little bit lower this year and that's just because our levy is not, we're not over levying in these areas because we, we want it to equal out to what we, our bonds cost, that's all we're levying. Transportation, a little bit under. IMRF, again, IMRF is really important. We have this huge fund balance in there, can't, can't transfer it anywhere. So we shouldn't be levying in there and we, we need to, and that's why you see that deficit. And then capital improvements, that is that money that we're, we usually spend every year on something. And so some of the things in the pipeline, I'm going to let Ed talk more about that in his update, but we had a wonderful meeting with our architects the other day. We're still moving forward with the demographic studies and the discussions about Middleton and the generators are on the list to be, for the improvement in there, that'll be about 300,000 of that. So a lot of those things are still moving forward. And then TORT's got the little bit of money and I'm really hoping our, we don't have too many legal fees and that stays like that, so. Ending balances, we're still going to be okay. We're at $33,66,389 in our fund balances at the end of the year. I will do, in our, my next, my next month's finance update, I will do a calculation of our fund balances early in the year this year. So I'm not going to wait to the end. I'm going to show you guys how the fund balances should look in our, in our next board meeting. And essentially, what we're trying to do is make sure that we only levy to cover our expenditures and that's all. Again, that formula for some of you who may not have been here, it's your, your last three years expenditures and that, you find the average of that, multiply it by two and then take away the spring tax collection. That's the number that's safe in your fund balance. So again, those are just going to kind of write us all. And then the goal from that is to also try to generate some more revenue for next year. I think really to be in a safe, very confident place for the district, we're going to look to find about $2 to $3 million in additional resources and we're going to work with our community to do that and we're going to work with our staff and we're going to, you know, help them with writing grants and we're going to spend a lot of time bringing in this money. And I think it's really, really an easy target for us to hit because we have a lot of people who want to help our students out there and we have some amazing staff and students and teachers that we can put on showcase to try to help us bring in these funds. All right, that's all. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is it possible for our district to kind of partner up with the village to help bring businesses or more businesses to offset some of the taxes for our community?
Oh yeah, there, there are a lot of things and, and I was recently speaking with Dr. Hightower, it was maybe like a month ago actually, about working with our politicians, our local politicians too, and like having them come in and speaking with them and seeing what's out there. So yes, and then things like our politicians and, you know, not just our village, but our police officers nearby, we can share a lot more, and our school districts. We, I think in our strategic plan, one of the goals was to work more with like 219 and the CSBOs there to pool our resources together. And so that's absolutely something we're definitely focusing on. The, all the CSBOs in this township meet every month for breakfast and I, well, I haven't gotten to attend because I've kind of been working a lot. It is going to be a priority to me going forward and I know that, well, breakfast sometimes doesn't sound like the biggest priority. It's important to be meeting with them, talking with them and sharing resources monthly. So it will, it will remain like a solid on my calendar.
I, I think kind of building off of that, I think what we'd also like to see, and I think as a community member, before I was on the board, I wasn't really aware of what our district being so small that we have so little business, which leads it, which kind of results in us not having as much income. So I think kind of what you were getting at and to speak for you was kind of if we can work with the, with, with the village to get some more development, especially along Main and areas of our district that should be paying tax dollars but are underdeveloped.
Oh yeah, we absolutely can do that. And I also, I also think that we, we have kind of started some of that work. So there, when we look at, back at the last strategic plan, you can see those goals of like working with the community. So there is a lot of little pieces of that kind of just already naturally in place.
And I know there are community members who are also invested in that work as well and, and ongoing, so.
Absolutely. And I think it needs to be a important part of maybe the finance committee's topics and putting that on the agenda consistently in there would probably be a good way to keep it moving forward. And our last little shout out to Karen, myself. So Karen over here, our PTO president, she's got 501(c)(3) status. So I would absolutely love to be writing some grants, more and more grants, right? And that's amazing for us. And so we're going to talk too about educational foundations and all kinds of amazing opportunities for the district to increase their revenues.
I have just an add-on to what Member Wolfinger and what Member Jacob said right here, and this might fall under a future possible agenda item, but I remember back prior to the pandemic, John Lockerbie would come a lot from the village and had, always was presenting something about something and I haven't seen him in a while, so do we, can we arrange that maybe?
Oh yeah, we can definitely do that. And I will say a lot of things kind of stopped during the pandemic. And you know, especially like the onsite visits from people kind of stopped, but we need to be working with them more. We absolutely can do that and I'll make sure that's a priority for the, for the business office.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, any other ones?
Yeah, just a quick question about hiring and retention. I know you said you were raising the rate at the starting salaries, which is great. Has there been, and I'm sure there has, but what steps have been taken to increase the diversity of our faculty and staff here? And I know that there's grants out there, have, have those been explored? Are we connecting with organizations that are making connections and have those grants, things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. Because you know, one of the district priorities is recruiting, is recruitment, recruitment and it's retention. And so it's a really important priority and goal, not just to the district in general, but just even to the HR office itself. It's not an easy topic to talk about hiring a diverse staff. It is very complicated. One thing that's really important to remember is that you cannot discriminate against people no matter what, if they're polka dot. You cannot say, I want a polka dot person. I'm, I'm going to stack everybody in the interview with polka dots. It doesn't matter. You can't do that. You can't look at their application and ask them what race they are and then hire them or not hire them or even interview them just based off of their race. So it gets tech, it gets technical and it gets complicated. But what we can do is get that data that shows us why they're leaving, why, who is and isn't applying and how we can then go out there and recruit the people that aren't applying that we want to be here. And it's not about who we hire, because we're going to hire the best people for our kids, period. What it's about is it's about having those people apply, getting them in our interview process, seeing where they come from, hearing their perspectives, right? And then getting the best that we can get, no matter what they look like, polka dot, green or striped, okay? So.
I'll jump in and share as well. So we last year partnered with Teach Plus. We will partner with them again this year and that was focused on policies and procedures of how to attract and retain people of color. We also are working with recently, and thanks to our board member Kelly Nelson, Natasha Nelson, introducing us to Dr.
Flicker.
Thank you, Flicker. She was wonderful. She is introducing us to some national African-American schools and we're also looking at Hispanic schools to increase where we are, where we are sending our notifications of our positions that are available so that we are diversifying just where we are focusing. But she had a wealth of knowledge just to really question us about what are our practices right now and different things that we need to consider and think about, as well as Teach Plus just helping us to think about when you recruit people of diverse backgrounds, understanding what their needs are against others and then really having conversations around the needs for affinity groups and how do we create those? And so we're working very hard as far as trying to understand what the landscapes are and to attract people. And honestly, she questioned even, well, what do, what do pictures on the website look like and how do people know that you're actually looking for people of color and you want to diversify? And so we are being very strategic around that and that has been the last meeting that we had this past month, Kelly Hutchins and I, as far as learning and now putting some pieces in place. And also from the lens of Delt, Kelly is going to work with one of the groups, I can't remember which one it was now, where we're looking at our exit interviews and they are going to give us some feedback on other things we might be collecting as far as data points to ensure that we are being responsive to this need.
Absolutely, and, and there are a ton more too. And I'll just kind of wrap it up by also just saying that for the hiring and retention as it pertains to getting the data, it's really about a demographic form that we've created, which is a system, a form that didn't exist, that we now send out with our pre-employment packet. And then that is, that when somebody is onboarded, that information is added into our iVisions accounting system. And that allows us to actually say how many people we have of different demographics and we really need to track that data and we need to look at why are, if people are leaving or people aren't hiring, coming in to apply, why? And then also just lastly, there's kind of a thought that we could work with some of our state representatives in creating sort of a bill that's more global. That's not just for our school district's success and increasing diversity of candidates, but for all school districts. And one of the roadblocks we see to a lot of the minority candidates is funding for college, that fifth year of college, they don't, you don't want to pay for that, you want to go to school and you want to start working and making money and that extra fifth year is known to be a huge roadblock. So working with some of our state representatives to find out what can the state do to support students who want to go to school and that fifth year is the roadblock to be a teacher, so. All right, that's all I have for you guys today. Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions though? No? All right. Go ahead, yep. Oops. Yeah, so what I do is I take the beginning fund balance minus the expenditures plus the revenues and see what they end up to. No, it does because all of our grants are accounted for currently in our revenue, except for when you're saying accounting for some, more grants. Like we do, we can always bring in more and we want to and do expect to. These would be like our state and federal grants, which are always in place. It's actually July 1st all the way through June 30th. Yeah, so like usually administrators contracts going? Yeah, and then there's the calendar year and then there's the school year. That's a great question and actually every district should be really shopping. That's one of the biggest jobs that we do, but we're actually been over 30-plus years on one of the biggest co-ops. It's called the Educational Benefits Collective Cooperative. It's all of, just all over the state, these schools, and we pull our power together and And we pull our power together and then they go out and shop for us. And then they come and give us the best that we can possibly get. And we've actually done really well, believe it or not. It's been tough for a lot of markets and ours was tough, but not like much, you know, worse than anybody else. No problem. Any other questions? All right, thank you guys very much.
I would like to make a motion to adjoint the public hearing.
Second.
I, I move. I need a motion to adjoint, to adjourn the public hearing on the budget for school year 2022, 2023.
I'll make a motion to adjourn public hearing on the budget for 2022, 23.
Seconded.
Moved by Secretary Ammala, seconded by Member Jacob.
Member Latasha Nelson. Member Mercer.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Ammala.
Yes.
I need a motion to reconvene the regular session meeting.
I move Abby Reed.
I'm calling the meeting back to order. We will next have, um, information, item A, Strategic Planning Presentation, Strategic Plan Update.
Before we start on what's in the deck, I just want to set some understanding about why we're doing a strategic plan update right now. This is a strategic plan upcoming year. And so we will be kicking off our strategic plan on September 28th, 7 o'clock PM at Meyer School. And we do hope that our families are there to support it. But in order for us to kick it off, we needed to know exactly where we are right now in this moment in our strategic plan. So we have things to celebrate. And so we are bringing to you information where we are celebrating, as well as information where we will continue to work on this, this coming, this year. Obviously, we don't know what our strategic panel is going to look like yet for next year. Hence the reason why we're doing a kickoff and we are going to go through a series of events where we need major participation from our families and community in order to make sure that we get the next five years correct. And so we have pulled together our systems, well, I shouldn't say systems, our Delt teams, as well as our strategic, strategic planning teams. And we did a very quick round. And so I really want to thank all of our teachers and staff that came together to go through what has happened over the last four years and to codify that information as best we can. If there are people that are watching this and you're like, hey, wait a minute, we need to celebrate X and it was left out, please let us know because we want to acknowledge all of the hard work from everyone from the last four years. And at the end of the year, we will acknowledge what has actually gotten done from the things that we are working on this year. And we don't want to leave anyone out just because of changes within staffing and changing with our community members. So if you see something, say something, so that we can truly acknowledge everyone and all of the blood, sweat and tears that have gone into the last four years of success for our children.
I think Dr. Hightower went over our goals for this presentation. Um, so give you an update, provide strategic planning groups an overview of our current stand, status. So we'll share this presentation when we kick off and engage our committees in a process of identifying our accomplishments for the coming year. And so each of us are going to share a part of the strategic plan. We're going to start with the whole child and that's Angela.
All right, a quick overview of the work that the whole child is coming, committee has accomplished, um, has done and accomplished over the past four years. Um, we've really focused on social emotional learning and competencies for all of our students. Um, we've explored SEL curricular options. Um, we've secured anti-bias training. The Anti-Defamation League came in last fall. I know there was training, um, with all staff before that. Um, we created and provided opportunities for students to increase connections with peers within and between schools. We've done a lot of reading programs that have supported that kind of, um, across grade level, um, peer interaction, social interaction. Um, we've provided trauma and crisis training to members of our school community. Um, one of those trainings was today, NTDSC came in and trained our, our teachers, our gen ed teachers on how to respond when children, um, are escalated or when they're dysregulated. And we really need to provide some solid research-based interventions. Um, the ongoing work that we're going to continue to focus on, um, we're going to expand learning opportunities in the community. One of those is DeBora Heitner is coming in on September 27th to speak about raising digital natives, um, making sure that our children are safe online. Um, we're assessing the implementation, integration and overall effectiveness of our social and emotional learning curriculum. Um, a lot of that work is done through the Panorama Survey and students reporting on how they feel related to the five student, um, the five castle competencies. Um, you know, we do that, um, twice a year. So that gives us good feedback in terms of not only how students are feeling, but also growth that happens over the year. Um, and then we're assessing our current curricular programming for teaching students about healthy choices and making recommendations for additional or, or alternative options. I think when this started, we were really focused more on nutritional options. But as, um, the pandemic hit and our students' needs changed, we really focused a lot on like coping strategies and social emotional, healthy decisions, um, in that regard. So that is Whole Child. Do you want to wait until the end for questions or side by side? Okay, any questions about Whole Child? All right, hearing none, I will pass it along.
Good evening. Um, I have, uh, had the pleasure of joining the Learning Environment Committee, uh, for the first time this year, as I just started with you guys. Um, but I did want to make sure that I highlighted and, um, celebrated a lot of the work that the Learning Environment Committee over the past year, as well as the prior four years before that have been putting into the initiatives under this group. Um, it has been an incredible amount of work. Um, a lot of that started prior to the pandemic, which definitely took some wind out of a lot of us, but they were still achieved so much. And, uh, some of the items that we wanted to celebrate here are their, uh, work on developing a full scope and sequence around digital citizenship that we're, uh, I think in a pretty good spot to start piloting. Um, there was also some work done to beautify our schools as you've been able to walk through and see some of the new paying, paint, um, carpeting that was done. Um, we are, as Sam mentioned, still in the process of executing a lot of those furniture orders. Um, so as we re-engage with our community, um, I, I think we'll be very excited to see that initiative move forward. Um, we've also, uh, in kind of in tangent with one of the initiatives around safety and security, obviously partnering with Dearborn Consulting, who's going to help, uh, give us an outside perspective on how we can make sure that we're prepared, um, for all, um, situations that can arise. I know that a lot of events that have been happening around our country, as well as some more very recently and very close, um, I think point to the very, very relevant need to, to see that through. So I think that, um, we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us. Um, but we're very excited to, uh, celebrate those accomplishments today that the Learning Environment has achieved. Any questions?
I have a quick question about digital citizenship.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um, it's like, where is that coming from?
I heard the speaker.
No problem. Um, it's curious to hear, I know typically we've offered digital citizenship type courses and trainings for parents who are at McCracken. So I'd love to learn a little bit about what the K through eight sequence looks like. If high level, if you're able to provide a little bit more clarity or color.
I wish I was able to provide the high level. I can tell you, if you're familiar with some of the curricular offerings that are provided through Common Sense Media, it follows very similar to that structure. Um, and I think the, the adjustment that, and this is again, just from my recent conversations with staff, that the, um, change will be to be more intentful about how that sequences across the entire district and tying it together, um, and making it more, I guess, intentful.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I guess I didn't understand what the word sequencement in this context. So I guess like it builds upon one another year by year is what it sounds like.
As they're going through grade levels.
Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would also just, you know, kind of add to, uh, Member Ammala's point that, you know, I think you look at a strategic plan and it has to do with something like technology. The, the world can be a very different technological place at the end of a strategic plan as it is at the start. And I, I think, I look at our children now and I see, you know, I'm, I gave my kids, you know, a device long before I thought I would because of COVID. And I think that that work for digital citizenship has, the, the needs have changed and possibly gotten younger as well. I think about even some incidents that happened with some of the older students at Middleton last year. And to me, it seems like the need to be talking about digital citizenship, both inside and outside of the school, has increased significantly.
Absolutely, I agree. And it's pushed it a lot more into the homes too. So I think, um, and that's one of the initiatives that's part of this committee is looking at how we can help with, uh, parents as well in that situation. Any others? Thank you so much.
Okay, academics, it's exciting. So first of all, our STEAM initiative, which was all over our strategic plan, is all over our buildings. Um, two of our buildings, so at, um, Meyer, we have Makerspace offerings and, uh, Learning Center. At Middleton, we also have Makerspace options for students, as well as a once a week, uh, what do they call it? Uh, exploratory, uh, class that is STEAM oriented. And then at McCracken, we have a one, what was it? A one trimester per year at McCracken that students take part in, as well as Makerspace type activities in the Learning Center upstairs. And then we have our robotics teams, which are growing exponentially over the last couple of years. Um, we'll be re-upping our FFFLL team this year, which we started last year. That's the Lego Robotics for our fifth, fifth graders. And then we had four teams in our VEX competition last year. So hoping to grow that team and hey, maybe more surprises around the corner with STEAM. We also last year, um, finalized recommitment and refined our standards, reference grading, and made sure that not only did we have clear protocols with all of that, but made sure that all of our teachers are going to be receiving strong professional learning that happened prior to the pandemic are now going to be for all of our new teachers as well. And then our ongoing work, which is exciting, um, I think first and foremost, our Delt Teaching and Learning and our Academics Committee are going to be joining together to look at our curricular framework and make sure that it is equitable, uh, for all of our students. And that will support not only our literacy, uh, initiative over the next couple of years, but our other curricular initiatives moving forward. And then we'll continue to get, engage in professional development about having students own their learning, right? Whether it be through, uh, inquiry-based learning or whether it be through student goal setting, these are opportunities, uh, that we offer in lots of different modes for our teachers. I'll take any questions.
Um, I know that we utilize standards-based learning practices, but speaking as a parent who has a ninth grader and that's a big change, what do we do to prepare them for that change when you go to high school and it's not a standard-based learning? It's not ref, um, reference grading practices aren't in place. It's a bit of a shock.
I think that's something that I will have to connect with Nancy and maybe give you an update via Dr. Hightower's board updates every week. And so if you give me like a week or two, we can kind of put something together for that. But that's a really good point. I agree with you.
So that's the first time I'm hearing this. And I think that that is where we need to meet with Niles North and really have conversations around the articulation, so that we can see how to actually, um, navigate that world.
Um, I have to, I have a question slash thought about the first point under ongoing work. One, I think it's phenomenal that we're doing that. Two, just want to highlight that we've had the passing of certain legislation that have expanded what curriculum looks like. For example, the Teach Act, right, to incorporate Asian-American history. We have the Positive Contribution of Muslim Americans Act, which means we integrate that into just the education over the course of, uh, a school year and other religious minority groups to be represented. So I'd love to, again, maybe not on the spot right now. I feel like I've been doing that with my questions, but not the intention. But would love an update of what that curriculum framework looks like for our students, uh, with just the direction that's come up from the state level.
Of course, yeah. No, I would be happy to give you an update right now. And when we talk about the curriculum framework, we're talking about really the structure in which our units are built. That's what we're talking about. What we want to make sure is that though, that structure that we use calls out all the places that we need to make sure that students see themselves in the curriculum. So that's what that is, uh, is for. What you're talking about with the Teach Act and the All Faiths Act and all the other legislation that has come out in the last year, um, ISBE has redone their social study standards. Um, they're technically approved, but they're still in draft form. Um, we spec, just spent this summer working with our teachers to at least align our current units to those. So we looked at the Teach Act, we looked at the All Faiths Act, we're looking at texts and literacy to make sure that we're, our students are represented. That's ongoing work this year. Um, and then it will continue as we move through our literacy development in hopes of connecting the dots for our, for our students and our teachers as well.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm back. Now it's time for the song. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. So, um, accomplishments, um, fiscal responsibility, we talked about a little bit in the budget meeting. It's probably going to stick around in this strategic plan, I'm assuming in some way. And we're never really done with this one. Um, but some of the great accomplishments that we can celebrate, um, that the district has done over the, um, since the last strategic plan was developed, have been to implement a finance committee, um, that includes a member of the community with open monthly meeting and encouragement for all staff to attend. So that was on the strategic goals and that one has been accomplished and is very successful. Um, presenting monthly to the Board of Education financial budget updates, including, um, it should say updates on grants. So including updates on grants. Um, and that's something that we're going to start seeing, um, in our next board report. We'll see the fund balances and the grants, um, as well as what you traditionally see, um, in a normal board report for me, which is just what percentage of spending have we done on budget, um, as far as revenue and expenditures go. Um, and then we've resolved 75% of our Priority Code AMB issues from our last 10-year life safety report. And I was working with Ed and our architects just the other day on this one. Um, that's really important because life safety at fire prevention is critical for our district. Um, and we have really been working to explore grant opportunities. So, um, that could have kind of gone in ongoing work because it's going to continue. But I also thought it was important to mention that there's been a ton of solid accomplishments as it relates to that already. Um, ongoing, and I'll just shout out, you know, Angela's got one right now for our, um, homeless students that she's been working, that we work together with to spend the money. Um, and then we're working to get a preschool grant. So, um, just a lot of hard work has gone into grants. Um, ongoing work, um, creating an updated long-range facility plan, we have to update that. Um, updating our business office manual, attending the IASBO Delegate Advisory Assembly meetings. And you see kind of the last three, attending the EdRed monthly meetings and meeting with the Niles Township quarterly to discuss those cost-sharing opportunities. Those meetings are really important for us to be participate in. So they really have to be attended regularly by somebody from the district office. And most of the time that may be me, but sometimes it might be a board member or Dr. Hightower or another administrator, um, maybe one from a campus or even a, a staff member that's not an administrator as well. Any questions? Yes.
So I think it's great that we've resolved 75% of the safety issues, but what are the other 25%?
Um, so there are little things, um, and, and some of those things are like offices and closets, offices and rooms that were actually supposed to be closets. You know, uh, we have some space issues and there's some of those space issues that we just are having a real struggle resolving. And most of that is office spaces and places that it shouldn't be.
Have we resolved the window issue, the opening of windows issues at Middleton? I know that was, was that part of the safety issue?
No, it actually wasn't. Uh, most of this stuff is, is relatively like, you know, on the life safety, it's really a focus on fire and prevention. Um, but I will say that Ed can hopefully give us a little bit of update and we'll make sure in our next board meeting that we definitely give you a nice clear update on the windows. Um, so our understanding is that they were put, not put in very well. Um, that they've cracked, those little, um, seals have bubbled up and that they're kind of pushing it out and they make it hard for people to open and close it. We know we have some work to do around that. Um, some of this money that we have from the fund balance for the O and M, that probably could go to that. Um, but we gotta work with, um, Mrs. Tamaru and we've got to work with all the stakeholders to really. all the stakeholders to really figure out what's the best investment in Middleton. Um, and that work's going to really amp up in the next few months. So. Any other questions? All right.
So for community engagement, there's been a lot that has occurred over the years. And so we will start first with our relationships with National Lewis University and IU and any IU. And then thinking about what we're doing with Niles Township High School, that should be a T. So we have hosted student teachers from the universities. We've also had our Teach Plus, which I spoke to earlier, that we have a relationship with, where we are looking at our hiring practices. McCracken students prior to the pandemic were tutoring our Middleton students and it's something that can definitely evolve again. And it was quite successful, is my understanding. We have increased our communication with our families who speak Arabic, Assyrian, Spanish Tagalog, Urdu, and Vietnamese. Um, and we are using those as our top five languages that we translate in now and make sure that we have interpreters when we have people in person. And so our district language ambassadors, we have to give kudos to them and the hard work that they do in our relationship with EL Parents Center. These are things that have been accomplished that are now fabrics in our district, which we are proud of. And then our ongoing work is around continuing to host student teachers to increase the number of universities with large populations of diverse education. Relationships is one of our goals. We are also increasing our school-to-home connection. And this really, it started before the pandemic and I am speaking for the past staff and the current staff that kicked this off, but it accelerated through the pandemic. And so the things that are now staples in our district because of that are Seesaw, Google Classroom, Google Meets. Um, and it was definitely accelerated with COVID. And so we have a very strong school to, um, home connection because of these technologies. And again, we can't say enough for our tech team who has really led the way for us to get that into the classrooms and into the homes. The district equity leadership team with Delt has hosted community roundtables, which have been, um, just last year phenomenal because that's how we were able to solidify our equity mission statement and ensuring that we had community voice from many people around the district. And we will continue with those types of community roundtables so that we are encouraging our families to get involved and to keep, you know, on track with what it is we're attempting to do and collecting the voices so that we are in representation of all of the members in our community and all the backgrounds of the people that we respect in our community. And so those roundtables allow us to focus on our district policies, our systems and around equity. And I just want to speak to, um, the fact that we were able to get this done in just a few weeks so that we can start to kick off our strategic plan, but do want to state that we will be back at the end of the year to acknowledge all of the other work that happens in this current strategic plan. We are not losing focus of the work that we're doing, but we also have to get started on the new strategic plan in order to have something to jump off on July 1st of next year. Any questions around community engagement?
I have two quick questions. The first is, have we always grouped Arabic and Assyrian into one category? Because I know the dialects are quite different.
We have not. I put it this way because of an experience that I had at the, um, I don't even remember what it was called. What were we at recently outside?
Oh, the fair, like the fun event that we had.
That's right.
Yeah, that.
The Back to School Bash. Thank you. I'm like, I can't think of it. You know, the one where the kids were having a ball? Um, at that time, a person on our staff who speaks Arabic corrected me and let me know that there is a written language of Arabic. I had been told before that Assyrian was a written language, but Arabic was not, and that's not true. So what she taught me is that the only people that were allowed to really learn the Arabic-written language were people that were inside of the church, but that it is not something that is actually taught anymore. And so out of respect for what I learned, I added it.
Dr. Hightower, are you transposing Assyrian for Arabic? I think you're transposing Assyrian was the one that was not the written language.
Yes, Assyrian, sorry, was the one that was not written language and Arabic was. Thank you so much.
No problem.
I half-learned it.
No, okay, that's great. I just want to clarify that we weren't bucketing the two together.
Yes, we're not. It's really acknowledging that, um, the learning that I got was insufficient and I wanted to be respectful to both languages.
No, I'm glad. That's awesome then. And then the second thing is tying into the second point under accomplishments. I would love to see in the future in the ongoing work, and I don't know if this is the place to give those recommendations, but that alumni pipeline that we've always been talking about to engage our, uh, you know, graduates from the district.
Who are now working here and part of our, yes.
Right, yeah, there's so many of us, yeah.
Dan included.
Right, Dan, I mean.
Our board members.
Yeah. Um, so seeing like McCracken students tutoring middle students, that that's great. Like, that's so cool. And I think that, um, it's, it sounds like a foundation of an alumni network program.
Agreed. And so, um, I wish Marty was here because he could speak way more eloquently than I can about this, but definitely McCracken was kicking this off to ensure that we had a pipeline, um, of teacher interest. And it's something that is still on our radar. And before I walk away, I do want to, I'm sure that Ruth is probably listening. We talked a lot about digital citizenship and I know that Ruth would want me to also say digital responsibility. Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments and suggestions, um, but also a question. Um, I guess my suggestion would be, um, I know that we were talking about the Alumni Network and McCracken kids tutoring Middleton students, but I also would ask the district to consider peer-to-peer tutoring between classmates at McCracken. Um, oftentimes even your peers can be great, um, resources. Um, and, um, oftentimes it just, you know, when you sit down, it, it connects kids that would normally not necessarily communicate or hang out together. Um, it gives kids, um, a feeling of, um, volunteerism, um, and.
Community.
And community. And so I would, um, ask that maybe consider doing a McCracken to McCracken student, uh, peer-to-peer, um, tutoring. Um, and also, uh, since we're talking about community engagement, I know that there is, um, the ELL Parent.
Center.
Community. We're looking for volunteers and I'm wondering if we can speak to that a little bit. I think we're looking for community volunteers to come into our schools. Maybe this would get somebody's attention and, um, get people more engaged and curious about volunteering for us.
Thank you. I'm sure Lila would appreciate that because we are definitely looking for volunteers. We do have our ambassadorship and we do have the relationship with the EL Center, um, but definitely are interested in community members that are coming in and willing to support us with our translations and with our, um, with just our support in need.
Just click on it. Recognizing that we have a lot more diversity in our paraprofessional compared to our teachers.
Yes.
Making sure that we're doing enough to support those paraprofessionals who want to go on to become teachers.
We actually put that into their contracts this year. So yes, it's the first time that we've said that we will tuition reimburse for our IFT members as well. So agreed. Any other questions?
If a parent wanted to volunteer, where would you encourage them to go to seek that information?
Is it Karen Hayes first? Just to the business office. Sorry, Karen, I was going to give you another duty. Well, you don't know, you just say Karen.
Call and. Thank you, Karen.
I don't have a question. I just have, um, a comment, probably more so for the people at home. Um, now that we're getting ready to kick off a new strategic planning season, I definitely want to encourage people to get involved. This is the opportunity to kind of get in at the ground floor and have a voice in the direction the district's going to take over the next five years. Um, and if you have neighbors, um, who might have young children in the district who may not necessarily know that these, these board meetings are live-streamed, um, or know what the strategic plan means, please invite them. You know, like bring a friend and say, come along with me. Um, or even the community members on your block whose children may no longer be in the district, but definitely have a voice when it comes to voting for things that our schools may need. The more voices at the table, the better to make sure that our plan meets the needs of all of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for an update, uh, we will also be sending out a postcard to the community about the strategic plan. Um, so people can be looking in their mailboxes for that information as well on dates, um, for when we will be meeting. Coming out later this week, hot off the presses. Karen will take care of that. We will now move to the superintendent's update.
My superintendent's update is updated online, so I don't have anything at it.
We will now move on to the class.
I have a couple of questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering, um, if you could, Dr. Hightower, just, um, clarify about the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, um, and kind of the information that I myself didn't completely understand and I think the community would really like to hear.
Absolutely. So we met with S.H.I.E.L.D. earlier in the summer. We said we would keep S.H.I.E.L.D. and we would continue with testing. Um, we got a lot of feedback over the summer around doing an opt-in as opposed to opt-out because there are, there was a lot of information going around that families, some families were just not interested. And so in order to really gather the true data, we did opt-in. Um, one thing that we did do that we decided, okay, we need to go another round, is that when we did the opt-in, it was a link. It was not a printed-out sheet of paper for families to opt-in, which could have made some, uh, negative opportunities for some families. And so we are now sending out paper copies. The other thing that we learned from S.H.I.E.L.D. on Friday, when we met with them again, and that was actually S.H.I.E.L.D. and what is our Zebra is our actual company that's doing the testing, is that they needed 50 or more people to be part of testing in order to test at the school site. At that point, McCracken did not have a full 50. They had 40-something. And the adults, honestly, we haven't, um, the teachers are, I'm sure, are going to do it or adults will do it, but it was not a priority last week and the week before, obviously because they're teaching, but in getting their, um, sign-ups. And so those are happening now as well. And so we're certain that we will have 50 or more or definitely more than 50. Um, but because of that, there were a couple of glitches. One, S.H.I.E.L.D. did not send the, um, test for McCracken to be able to test students without Zebra in time. And so that was one of the, um, hiccups. And then needing to make a different schedule because S.H.I.E.L.D. did not tell us the number had to be 50. And so we have to come up with what would be a comparable, um, focus as far as how to test the students. And our, our administrators have not been, you know, uh, trained to test. And so those were a few things that got in the way. We anticipate having well over 50 and not having our administrators to test the students. And therefore, uh, Zebra will send their staff to test. And so that was the hiccup for this week, but we are moving ahead with S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. We know that it's important and we believe parents, if needed, will be able, they will opt in. Um, we hope, no one needs it, but we are definitely still moving ahead. We are one of the few districts in the area that actually kept S.H.I.E.L.D. testing and we believe that is the right thing to do.
One of the great things about S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is, um, you can opt your child in, as I understand, but they don't necessarily have to go. The good thing about having it in district in case there is an outbreak, that we have it right here and we can start testing. Um, and that is such a convenience. So you can opt in your child, as I understand, but they don't necessarily have to test weekly. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Our staff is not going to, if a child says they're, they don't want to test that day, they want to skip it, we will not force a child to go and get the test. Um, but we do have to have 50 test in order to keep the program where S.H.I.E.L.D. is coming in and they're testing for our staff. And our staff is not having to do it because it's not something we've built into our administration's schedule. Obviously, they have a lot of other things on their plate.
Can families opt in later?
I don't believe there's any reason why you can't opt in when you decide to. We didn't have never, like if someone transferred in, they could always opt in. There's not a timeframe or a time limit because we're offering it.
And I think definitely as the fall comes around, you know, we've gotten a lot more complacent during the summer months. Things are going to change.
Agreed. And I would rather have it in-house and not have to worry about it than to wish we had it if we needed it.
My other quick question, um, is, um, on the superintendent's update, is I'm really excited to see this, um, potential relationship with Niles Township Government and Food Pantry. And I'm wondering if there's anything to talk about yet or if, um, there's any information that we, uh, would want to know about? Or is this just kind of still in the process of discussion?
I don't have a real, like, here is what's going to happen just yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I look forward to it.
Class size update?
Can I, can I, I have a question about, it's in the packet, but I have a question about it. Um, and I don't know if this is the proper place for this question or if it's more of a student services question. But I know at the start of the year, sometimes there's, uh, difficult juggling with meeting that 30% threshold in special ed and, and needing to do the, um, to file if we need the allowance. Um, so do we ever release numbers to the board about how many classrooms are out of compliance or can you speak to that?
I can speak to that. Um, we only filled out one waiver. I don't know why my microphone is so weird. We filled out only one waiver at McCracken for the school year. And really the reason that the ratios was off was because it was a really small class size. And so that just, yeah. So there was only one.
As far as, uh, class, I know, whoops, um, some of the classes are getting pretty close to the board policy guidelines. Are we concerned about that? Is there, um, any kind of plan if it's, uh, 29 seems like a lot of kids.
I want to pull up the numbers for you. So in taking a look at our class size numbers, um, currently for kindergarten for September, we are between 13 and 20. Um, at kindergarten, but keeping in mind that the 13 to 20 is still within the range because of the 13. Um, at our sec-, at our first grade, we are 17, sorry, for September, we're 15 to 19. At our sec, at our first grade, we are 17, sorry, for September, we're 15 to 19. We are at 14 to 18 within our third grade. Where am I? Sorry, second grade. Here we go, I've got to go across. At third grade, we are now at 20 to 23 for September, and so, then, looking at our Board Guidelines, it's 21 to 25. We are now at 12 to 20 at fourth grade, where we're at a guidelines of 23 to 28. For fifth grade, we are at 11 to 24 with guidelines of 23 to 28. Sixth grade, we have 12 to 23 for September, and our guidelines are 23 to 28. At sixth grade, we, sorry, where am I? Seventh grade, we are at 12 to 23 with guidelines of 23 to 28. Six, seventh is 11 to 26 and 25 to 30. My lines, my numbers are off here. And then, at seventh grade, I said 11 to 26 and 25 to 30 is the guideline, and then at eighth grade, we are at 9 to 29, keeping in mind that our classes change in the middle school, and so, based on students' needs, there's a little bit of fluctuation, but we still have some significant space between that 9 and 29 students at those grade levels. So, we seem to be fine unless we get a serious influx, and then, we would have to figure out what we're going to do to increase the number of classrooms to satisfy those guidelines. And apologies, let me go back to the question around the pantry. So, a couple of things, in meeting with Bonnie and having conversations and finding out about the scholarships, and thank you so much for turning me on to these summer scholarships. We recognize that our students that get free and reduced lunch actually get free, they get access to scholarships for summer programming, and so, we need to be conscientious, conscientious in February when those applications come out to ensure that our families know about that. And thinking about the food pantry, and I kind of blanked on that one, yes, we had conversations around the food pantry, and what we learned was, it's not just food, it's also different types of family supplies that become extremely expensive for families, all the way down to diapers. And so, making sure that our families are aware of these supports, and making sure that if we have families in a district that want to donate to the food pantry, that not only can we, you know, give and get, and so, making sure that we are sharing that type of information with our families so that we are supporting the food pantry because they are doing a yeoman's job when it comes to taking care of our people.
They also do school supplies and other incredible services for our community, and have tons of social services, so we don't have to wait for us to have a relationship with them. Please check them out if there's a need. They're definitely a great resource for our community.
So, am I hearing that they offer scholarships for families, for example, who may need support in summer programming, like through the Park District?
That is exactly correct. So, the Park District programs are open to children that get free and reduced lunch with scholarships, and we just have to get in on the ground and making sure that our families are aware and the applications come out in February.
Has any, so, registering for programs for the Park District, for most of us know, is kind of like the Hunger Games. And so, not many. If they have to fill out a form in order to be able to be granted the support, are they going to miss out on available spots in those programs?
Because we typically sign up in January.
And so, there's some kind of pathway to help those people identify and be able to at least get the spot while they're applying for the support? Does that make sense?
Well, actually, you don't have to pay upfront. I think you have to pay a deposit.
But if you're a free and reduced lunch person, you may not necessarily have the money to make that deposit, and the more things you sign up for, the higher that deposit gets.
That is true.
Our social workers actually work with families, and we have many kids every year that get to get these opportunities on scholarship.
Thank you.
I also flagged it for Joanne, so that we're making sure that we know who our free and reduced lunch students are. The same thing with Karen, it's on her radar as well. But thank you for telling me that they're actually applying in January because I had gotten the information in February, and we would have been a month late.
We can now move, all of the administrators' updates are in the community packet, and so, unless there was something specifically that an administrator wanted to speak to, or a specific question that a board member had that they wanted direct to one of our administrators, I encourage the community, as well as the other board members, to review that information that is located in your packet. Do we have any future possible agenda items, or are the?
I guess this kind of goes to, particularly at Middleton, I know that there have been troubles with after-school care, about getting people in, and that's not something we run. It's run through the district, to be clear. But those are our kids, and I think it's been a continual, you know, thinking about the registration for camp gave me flashbacks to registering for Space as well, and getting rejected, and having to figure out how, you know, that, how to make that work with two working parents. And so, I guess one thing I would, I would like to maybe see us look at is, how well are we meeting the after-school needs just for childcare of our population, and what we can do in-house or to help the Park District meet our, meet us halfway?
I do know that everybody who applied for in the morning got in, and I, to my knowledge, we don't have very many kids left on the waitlist in the afternoon, but I could double-check on that.
I will say, I have talked to some parents who were on the waitlist who found other options, but, you know, in the meantime, they were kind of in a lurch. So, I think that's what, that's the question is, I think there's a lot of parents who ended up in that lurch that had to figure it out. It might not be on those lists anymore because they found something, but it took a while.
And it's usually far more costly if it's being done through a private organization rather than through Park District.
I will say that last year, we committed to having every single student in the program, but unfortunately, Space wasn't able to find the number of people to service the number of students for that, and that's why, for safety this year, we had to limit to, limit it to the number of staff that they could provide. Yes, exactly.
One thing I would like to add as a possible agenda item, I think I bring this up every year around this time, as we begin to kind of look at our facility plans and what we want to do with the school buildings, I also would like for us to discuss the offerings that we have for students and families around our clubs, our athletic programmings, and things of that sort. I think, you know, around this time last year, I brought up the idea that I know at McCracken, for example, we have a running club, but we have schools within our community that actually have track teams, and there are students and families that could participate in something like track and field because all it really costs you is a pair of gym shoes. But, and we have the facilities for it, but we don't necessarily have those program offerings. So, I would like for us to kind of, kind of think about where we want our schools to go, not necessarily where they've been, as we are kind of building out plans for the future.
And we do know how it runs.
Yes.
And I think to kind of piggyback on that, I think it's important because we do participate, our district does participate in the Niles North competition, and I was a little bit worried last year that these kids didn't really know how to jump hurdles, throw discus, so I think preparing them for it would be great to prevent injuries, but also to like, kind of let them know, this is what, they literally got in a bus and went, it seemed like, and they participated in the competition, but I'm not 100% sure that they weren't necessarily prepared for it physically, nor did they really know what they were doing. So, I think that would be really great to have a track club.
Or a competitive chess club. You know, there's just some different ideas, because I also want to be very cognizant that we have a very diverse population and family, but sometimes our sports offerings are kind of very much from a perspective of what's popular maybe in America, or in certain parts of American culture, that may not capture other students and families. And so, what are some ways that we can, you know, get more kids connected to their school community? So, just by looking at some of those offerings.
I just wanted to ask, when we're looking at after-school opportunities, I've heard some comments from our public here, as well as you, about thinking about ways to get them engaged with physical, physical environments, which is absolutely, I think, a priority focus. Would also want to know if you're thinking about ways to create more, I guess, change in those summer offerings, is looking at other areas that, that are growing, like esports or something like that, that touches on youth culture to create that community, and just wanted to ask how you felt about that.
I think what's good for kids is what's good for kids, you know, personally, and that's why I kind of bring it up as a future agenda item, because I think there should be things that we talk about to add, because we don't know what we're not doing unless we talk about it. And some of them can be really quick fixes or simple changes. Maybe it's a staffing thing, maybe, you know, as we're looking to hire new people, maybe we need to look at someone who has some esports, you know, information that they could kind of bring in and kind of help us grow a program, but we're not having those conversations, so therefore, we're not getting those offerings to our kids. So, I welcome that.
I have a suggestion for a future agenda item as well. This is one of the policies that came out this past press packet, sort of really exciting one. It's policy number, number 470, and it talks about sustainability and resource conservation. So, not right now because it's a big thing to take on, but I'm wondering if we can kind of start conversations about how we can make an impact and be more sustainable as a district.
And I think finally, a future potential would be, I know that we're under contract currently in terms of our food options, but I know coming next year, we will be entering negotiations for different options for, for food, and just kind of putting that out
Okay, I, I got it. I'm just kidding. I'm like, ah, okay, so Karen can back me up on this one. We've had some rules around the bidding for food services change for the next year, so it's kind of going more in alignment with something we're familiar with, with our E-Rate Grants, and that is where we get to include our priorities as part of how we're going to score them, so it just doesn't go by what's the cheapest anymore, and so, I think that's going to be really important.
Thank you.
Anything else to add to the very lengthy list of possible future agenda items? We will now move into our community, our committee reports section of the agenda. Is there anything from the Board Equity Committee? Well, Vice President Nelson, there's nothing from the Board Equity Committee, because we are going to be talking about our changes with Halloween, right? But I don't necessarily, Board Member Nelson doesn't necessarily have anything to report out just yet, so I look forward to hearing from other people. Board Member Nelson is also waiting to hear some wonderful information about, you know, what we're going to be doing with adult, in the adult offerings, and so, if anyone would like to chime in, I'm, not adult offerings, but like, are we meeting this year for the community roundtables? I didn't want to ambush you.
So, I will speak to the Board Equity Committee. We focused our attention on Halloween and how we had over 30 students that were unable to participate in Halloween last year, and so, sent out messaging first to our administration in reference to this, that we wanted to really think about how do we reimagine our fall activities, and just sent the exact same messaging out to our teachers. What we are trying to do is to ensure that our children are included in activities. Well, we're, our goal is, is to not get rid of fun and joy. And so, the question is, how do we do this in such a way that we don't have 30-plus children having to opt out of having fun and joy with all of their other peers? And so, thinking about not taking away dressing up and coming into different types of costumes, but reimagining it, that it is not centered around something that forces cultures to have to opt out of. So, really thinking about how do we dress up and do different types of themes, and how do we dress up and think about different types of characters and books, and how do we make sure that we have an inclusive environment which actually aligns to our equity mission statement? And so, we sent out a messaging on yesterday evening to our staff to ask them to please give us understanding and feedback of things that you'd want to see in a Fall Fest, and what dates would we actually select, so that we're not selecting Halloween that would immediately have families have their children to opt out, and that our children do not have to be rerouted to another space in order to allow others to, other fam, children to engage in activities that they have to actually be pulled out of and call ourselves inclusive and diverse and respectful to all of our children. And so, we are looking forward to that feedback, so that we can start to plan activities that will allow all inclusivity during the school day, and those other activities can happen after school for families that celebrate and are able to engage in Halloween activities and things of those nature without children feeling as though they've been excluded.
I just want to say thank you for initiating and working through that dialogue. I don't expect, you know, I know it's happened in other neighborhoods and other, in other suburbs nearby, and I know people have strong feelings about it. I, for one, am willing to be the Halloween Grinch, and I'm a person who decorates with far too much stuff on Halloween and loves Halloween, and I still, you said it so well. So, thank you so much for trying to make our environment inclusive for everyone and really thinking about it in a child-centered way.
I also want to ask, you know, families, communities, teachers, everyone involved this year, to give everyone grace as we work through this. People are trying to come up with something that's for the good of all of the students and all of the school community, and, you know, if for some reason it's not as exciting this year as it was last year because of the way you remembered it, know that every year, we have the opportunity to use feedback and grow and build something that can be more amazing. So, recognize that we're trying to do a good thing, and, you know, we need some space to, to grow and reimagine. Something else, did have, I did have one thing I wanted to mention about the Equity Committee. Member Amwala and I met to discuss how, you know, one of the places where we would like to focus our attention as a board as we look to our strategic plan is making sure that those diversity and equity goals for the district are infused throughout the entire strategic, strategic plan, and not just like one box to be checked, that you find it in every single thing, in every single corner of the strategic plan. And so, I think that that's important, that we mention that. So, again, another plug for people to get involved with the strategic planning process. If there are ways in which you feel like our district can be better around, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion, yet another thing to come bring that voice to the table.
And I just want to add that we are doing not SMART goals when we do our strategic plan, but we are doing SMART T goals, which adds an I and E, I for inclusion and E for
Board Policy Committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
It's okay. I was just gonna, you asked about community roundtables. I don't have an answer for community roundtables, but I do have an answer for community professional learning, and that is if you want to join our community equity, community equity, what did we call it? Cohort? Our district equity cohort. It's open to the community members. It's once a month on Zoom, comfort of your own home, talking about different topics around equity and inclusion. Go to the Weekly, the We Just... equity and inclusion. Go to the weekly, the We Design Weekly and sign up. There are still spaces available. First group meeting is at the end of the month. This is in addition to SEED. I still highly encourage SEED. This is something that is coming through our professional learning strand of our Delt. And that was not only providing professional development for our staff, but the community as well and opening that up. And so, this is our first kind of offering into that space of saying, here's some opportunity for staff and community to interact in this way.
Thank you.
And is that series? So, sorry. Just a quick question. Is that series something that people, once they start going, they have to go to every meeting? Because in SEED, you are committed to come to every meeting. Or is this something like they can kind of pop in and it's a little more flexible?
I think because of the nature of the conversations and the relationships that you build and the trust you have to build in order to have these types of conversations, we're asking that people commit to all of them. They can miss one, but really, we really want to commit to all of them. The dates are laid out. Everything is via Zoom. It's at night. You know, it shouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't conflict with too much, but maybe that's something for feedback for the future if we want to also do something in-person or something that's more about pop-in, sort of like the community roundtable. We can definitely talk with our community engagement strand.
And because you referenced SEED, we still have about four free seats that have not been committed to. And the last date to claim them is this Friday?
This Thursday.
Board Policy Committee?
We did not meet. We are approving some policies this evening. There are some really great policies. Again, the sustainability one is really exciting. Some health policies that are coming through. We did a lot of work. So, thank you to everybody in the Policy Committee for the time. It was a lot of, kind of, lots of reading and going through stuff. And we're very meticulous about making sure that our policies are equitable and inclusive. So, that would be it. Ed Red?
Ed Red?
That would be me again. We did not have a representative in August due to vacations and travel. There will not be one September twenty-second from the board, but maybe we can get somebody to attend. Although, the September twenty-second one is more kind of introduction to Ed Red. I will be the new rep. I have it on my calendar for the rest of the year. I just will take the day off from work on those days and I will make it and I will report back to you.
Thank you for your time. NTDSE?
So, I am the new representative for NTDSE and we met last week. And a significant portion of the meeting was geared toward welcoming about twenty new staff members. So, they've done a lot of hiring, not just at Malloy, but across the districts. They talked about the fact that although they've done a major renovation and it's a very beautiful space, they still need more space. And that would include more space at Malloy and then additional space within the different districts. And finally, they talked about having representation in our board meetings and having the opportunity to be invited to our board meetings to just have that representation.
Thank you. PTO?
We on?
Yes.
Okay. I know you have a lot of new business, so I'm going to be as brief as I can with the many points I have on the sheet. We had our first meeting in September. That's this month. It's been a long day. Bushra, thank you for coming to that meeting. We had, Bushra showed up and we had a number of new parents show up as well. And then, a big thank you to Ruth Sinker who came and did a presentation this past month on where you can find things, the new updated weekly, how to get short URLs from the website, things like that. I mean, it was amazing. She was great. This coming month in October, our meeting is on October third. If you can't remember that date, it's my son's birthday. So, just remember Hamilton's birthday and you'll know when it is. We'll be meeting that night. We are having representatives from the Parent EL Center come in, from the library and from Niles Township. And so, I've invited those groups to come and talk to our families. So, if you have connections to different families in the district, I would say for administrators who work in different, especially student services, letting our families know that we're going to have these representatives there that week to kind of go through what services are available because we want to be, as the PTO, helping with that. To that end, we've had some discussions tonight about the Park District. The Park District is our guest speaker in December. They're going to be coming in specifically to talk with families about how you register for summer programs and how you navigate space and when the space registration is coming up. And so, I have them locked in for our December meeting. So, again, if you have questions for that or you think I should talk to them about other ways they can come to that, we can work with that too. I would also work with the district on that. But we have them locked in for December because I knew January, my kids aren't in part of this, aren't in the Parks District side, but I know, I listen to all of you guys who knock it out with each other, trying to get your kids in the programs. So, so those are some of the ones coming up. We have a list. If you go out to our website, district735pto.org, you can see who all of our guest speakers are for the year, what our topics are. So, each month, we have a different group coming in. What we're looking to do right now, so what we're trying to do currently is I need volunteers. I need specifically Middleton volunteer parents and McCracken volunteer parents who want to kind of form some teams who can then work with the principals at those locations to do some different events throughout the year. And so, at Meyer, we have a great team, Meyer parent leaders who are already working with Dr. Way. But I'd like to get a team at Middleton and at McCracken. So, I'm looking for volunteers for that. Also, we have the Middleton Book Fair that is very quickly approaching, again, on Hamilton's birthday, which is October third. And so, if you can't remember, it starts then. But we're going to need volunteers in the morning before school and in the afternoons. And Ashley Alizy is working on that. And she'll be, she's working with Middleton and their staff on it. I believe it's going to be in the NPR this year. And we just, we want to be a collective working together to help make that happen for our students. And so, if you have time to volunteer during that week of the book fair, please, 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 take one of the slots and help us make that a great event. So, book fairs, building teams. I want to partner with buildings. That's one of the things on my list. And some of the things that we're looking at, ironically, one of the things that, as the PTO, that we have on our list is a fall festival, which we used to help do at Middleton. Because the district is changing its priorities, as a PTO, we want to try to work with the district to see if we can help come alongside that. I know that we have a number of games and things that we, the PTO, own that we have done at other fall fests. So, if we can volunteer those to some of the schools during their day things, or if we want to have another, you know, event that isn't inside of the day, we can do that as well. But we would love to be a resource, however we can help assist with that. And then, other things that we want to partner with schools on this year are to do some dances. I know we want to bring back dances at Middleton. And we have the eighth grade dance at McCracken and some other things. We were thinking about some movie nights. And one of the things that's on my list of things that I would like to do is I'd like to kind of reimagine what we have done with International Fest. And I know, I'm not sure if the district is working on, it's usually collaboration between the district and the PTO and some other groups. But one idea I had this year was to maybe do something called a Taste of Seventy-three and a Half. And along with that, make a cookbook where families could submit recipes. We would build a cookbook and then we would have a Taste of Seventy-three and a Half in the spring where parents could then, you know, bring those different recipes into the district. And we can do a sharing type of thing and then also have the cookbooks that families could have of different recipes from around our district. So, it's an idea that is kind of hopping around my head. We'll see how it goes. Sam stole my thunder. Whatever. But we, I, as I took over the presidency, I have found out that we had lost our 501(c)(3) status. As of this week, I have regained our status as a 501(c)(3). And so, we are back legally federally. I'm now working on getting our Illinois tax exempt back. And so, that is, you know, step by step, I'm getting there. So, those are some of the things that I'm working on behind the scenes on the PTO. But we are, for all parents watching, because I know there are probably at least two, well, besides the ones right in front of me, besides the ones in front of me. If we are going to start pushing out our, we're going to be using Cheddar Up to do donations and event registrations and things like that. And I have not publicized any of that yet because we did not have our 501(c)(3). But now that we have it, I'm going to start pushing that information out where parents can make donations to the PTO for the things that we're going to be doing. So, those are the highlights. I'm sorry if I talk too long. Oh, yeah. And my Spirit Ware is awesome. Period. End of discussion. So, I hope that everyone's enjoying it. If you don't know, you can order Spirit Ware twenty-four seven. They will ship it to you. There's lots of options out there. Any questions for me, from you guys? No, you want to get on with community? I get it. Okay. Have a good meeting.
Thank you for all your work, Karen. For the PTO within the district, outside of the district, and the scouts, for people who don't realize that her family is involved in the scouts as well. Thank you for all of your help and your support. Finance Committee?
Emily's not here, so I will go ahead and give the finance update. And let's, Bushra, did you take, did you want to, I want to offer to a board member?
I took notes, but you always put the agenda together, so I'm happy for you to do it.
All right. Yeah, just save me if I was up at all. Okay, so, in the last finance committee, we talked more about the demographic study. We worked with our educational pioneer, collaborative pioneer intern. And he presented his research in a PowerPoint presentation format for us on the demographic study. And he helped us to create our bid package. And that was kind of a fun learning process for him as well as myself and working with him. And then, we also talked about our teacher RFP. And so, what I mean by our teacher RFP is that the district is going to work to develop a grant program funded by district dollars where teachers can apply for the grant and ask for amazing and strange things that maybe would never be funded before, but that they feel can really make a difference in their classrooms. And those will be awarded hopefully based on, we're still not through that plan. We're just kind of developing it. But will be awarded based on a rubric aligned to our priorities and our strategic goals. And then, we also talked about cash on hand, if I remember correctly, right, Bushra? And the cash on hand is essentially that our Cook County Clerk is a little bit late with our tax payments right now and that we had to do a calculation to make sure that we had enough fund balances to float us, basically. And we do. We're okay. So, the county was offering a bridge loan, which was tax-free, I mean, not tax-free, interest-free, if districts needed to borrow the money. But we unfortunately, we fortunately did not have to.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we are now going to move on to old business. I need a motion to approve policies for adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve policies for adoption. Second.
Member Wolfinger, do you have anything to say about these policies that are up for adoption?
No, really, just, I think I covered it all in the Policy Committee.
Roll call?
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
We will now move into new business. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I make a motion to approve the personnel report.
A second.
Moved by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. Any just? I need a motion to approve a resolution to adopt the FY-
Wait, I just have a quick comment about the personnel report. I knew Ms. Rosenfeld would be back. She can't stay away from us. So, I'm so glad that she's back as a substitute.
You cannot discuss the personnel report, Member Wolfinger.
Sorry.
Not even in a good way.
But she'll be back.
Not even in a good way.
What's that?
Not even in a good way.
We have great subs coming in.
No, thank you.
Member Jacob? Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion's been approved. I now need a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the FY twenty-three amended budget.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-three amended budget.
Second.
I'll restate it. I need a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the FY twenty-three budget.
I correct. I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Seconded.
Moved by Member Latasha Nelson, seconded by Member Jacob. Any discussion? Roll call?
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member, no. Motion carries. I now need a motion to approve the band instrument bid to music and arts.
I'll make a motion to approve the band instrument bid to music and art.
Second.
I need a motion to award band instrument bid to music and arts for one hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll make a motion to award band instrument bid to music and art for one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy-eight, fifty-one.
A second.
Moved by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. Any discussion around this item?
Not discussion, but I will say, I know this number seems quite high, but as someone who's on the Finance Committee, the number that was brought to us and what is here, this is significantly low. And this is a ten-year investment for our band program and instruments. So, don't let the numbers scare you.
I also want to just acknowledge that Chip has kept an exclusive record of what is needed and what can be repaired, what cannot be repaired, and what is needed for our children. And I do thank him for keeping the records that he did.
And we also thank him for what he brings to the music department and for the kids because it is one of the best things that we offer them.
Any other questions?
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Board of Education, McCracken, Middleton and Meyer. I need a motion to approve the sale of the two thousand and nine used Dodge Ram truck to Alvin Carter for three thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of a two thousand and nine used Dodge Ram truck to Alvin Carter for three thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. Any discussion around this item or questions? Roll call, please.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolffinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, McCracken, Middleton, Meyer Education Association regarding evaluations.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Board of Education, McCracken, Middleton, and Meyer Education Association regarding evaluations.
Second. Moved by Member Latasha Nelson, seconded by Member Mercer. Any discussion or questions around this? Call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, McCracken, Middleton, and Meyer Education Association, and Cesar Mendoza.
I motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, McCracken, Middleton, and Meyer Education Association, and Cesar Mendoza.
Second.
Moved by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Wolffinger. Questions or discussion?
Would you like to kind of review what we're doing so that the community understands?
Absolutely. So it was brought to our attention during teacher negotiations as Cesar Mendoza had never gotten his stipends for the five years that he was teaching the after-school programs, and so we are righting a wrong, and we are giving him his just due of his financials for doing that work without being paid.
Can we also thank Mr. Mendoza for his committed service? Because although he had not received the stipend, he still has given 100% to our students and families.
Member Mercer?
Aye, yes.
Member Wolffinger?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the consulting agreement, New Leaders and Skokie School District 73.5 in the amount of $47,000, $47,900. $47,900.
I move to approve the consulting agreement between New Leaders and Skokie School District 73.5 in the amount of $47,900.
I'll speak to this. New Leaders is a...
Second.
Moved by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. Dr. Hightower?
New Leaders is a consulting company that works with us. They do coaching for some of our staff members. They are now focusing on our stra, our planning, of strategic planning, and they have supported us throughout our goal-setting and last year's writing and development of our administrators' evaluations.
I have a quick follow-up question, Dr. Hightower. Oh, yes, sorry, you were nodding. Do you, is this specifically these trainings for administrators? And I see that this will terminate by the end of this year, so will, is this effective immediately? Because the date just says new date.
It is effective immediately for this school year, yes.
Who would be some of the, would it just be all administrators that benefit from this type of developmental training?
It's our cabinet and our district administration, yes.
And just last quick question, is there a reason why we went with a group based in New York? Was there anything like local that compares to this type of programming?
They are based in New York, but actually the coaches that support us live here locally. It is a national organization. It's an organization I've had a relationship with since 2006, which focuses, has always been on equity and delivering on the results of schools.
That's great. I'm glad we're investing in our admin and staff in a great way. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion around this item? Roll call.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolffinger?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion around Item H, policies for first read and review? Policy Committee?
I just kind of want to run through why we're changing this policy. Our old policy states that we have to approve, I believe, $5,000 that, for every $5,000 that the district spends. So we wanted to give them a little bit more flexibility and, you know, be able to make timely purchases without having to wait for a board meeting, so we increased it to $25,000, which seems to be the standard in other districts. So this is more to give the administration and the district more flexibility to just be able to kind of make their own decisions, up to $25,000.
A correction is $20,000 that we increased. A lot of other districts around here are $25,000, but we decided to go with 20.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but again, through the finance committee, it became quite obvious, and thank you for Samantha for bringing this to our attention. Again, state standard is 25, we're going to 20, and everything will still be posted, therefore, for transparency's sake, we're not taking anything away. We just don't want to be a bottleneck to the work that the district is hoping to do.
If there's no further discussion, thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda, just for the public to be reminded of. We do not discuss the consent agenda, we approve it as a whole. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Amawala.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolffinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now's the time for public comment. Do we have any new public comments? Come on back.
Hi, it's Emily again. I just wanted to say a couple things. I really enjoy seeing Ms. Shaleski every morning and every afternoon as I drive by, and she really keeps the line going on the corner at Middleton. Also, I know I've said this before, but Mr. Pong is just so amazing. I see him every morning, and he's always out there, and he says hello to every student as they walk by or as he walks by. And he's always like, "Yeah, come on, you know, I'll take care of it." He's just like a gem in the district, and I just think he deserves his own shout-out. And I'm super excited to get my coffee, it's so good coffee tomorrow, so thank you. They have amazing coffee, and I hope that everyone stops by the truck, so.
Hi, it's Rachel. Can I borrow Emily's extra time? I had two things I think I'll forget, and then two I was reminded of. I'm sorry, my shock at the music and arts, I was hoping that was a mispronunciation for Evanston Music and Band and Orchestra over there. I see that two companies went to bid, they were in Schaumburg, and we chose the one amount prospect. And maybe that's not something they offer, because I totally trust Chip implicitly with everything. But I, you know, as you asked about the consulting firm, why is it not somebody local? But Evanston Band and Orchestra is just blocks away, but. And Member Kelly Nelson reminded me of something I've meant to say over and over again, but I haven't been here. You bring up the sports so much, and Dick's Sporting Goods offers grants, up to $25,000. You can apply monthly, you get your results back in 60 days. I talked to Mr. Cho about this last spring, and wanted to talk to the coach and kind of flesh out, like, look, I know nothing about sports ball, nothing. And so I wanted to talk to the coach that we're with on Tuesdays and look at like kind of a two-year program, how the, you know, because you have to make a budget for the program, what sport you're going to do. There's a list of sports, and Dick's has to be active in our community, which they are. So that's that. And I wanted to say with the Niles Food Pantry, the Middleton Garden has been donating to them for three years. So, thank you. We are over 200 bags, large bags of produce this year. I know there were questions about the volunteering at a meeting when Emily mentioned it. So we have a grant through the Whole Kids Foundation. We wrote in 2019. We got the check in 2020, and it was lost in the building with no one there. We still have a good amount of grant money that helps us run our garden club, which we started last year, finally, after a couple of years. And we grow four seasons. We grow in the winter, under the snow. So real quick, in 2020, we have a sister garden, I call it, at the YWCA Evanston North Shore, where I have a whole city's grant that's for adult eating, healthy eating education. So in 2020, we actually directed all of Middleton's stuff to the YWCA and the victims of domestic violence, as they were being evacuated from the shelter, put into hotels. It was over 500 bags. And then last year in 2021, the Y was a brand-new building, if you've seen it, right? Brand-new facility we have over there on Ridge and Church, and it was empty. And we took everything from the Y and Middleton and donated it to the Niles Food Pantry, and that was over 500 bags. So now we're, the Y is active with residents, and the Middleton is going, and we, I was there this morning. So we totally support the food pantry. And, sorry, I'll go off about the garden for like hours. Last thing I want to say, digital citizenship responsibility. You know, saying digital natives, I raise analog kids. It's awkward. It can be a real social challenge for them. And talking about younger kids being involved, oh, they're young, they're really young. And I would like to challenge everybody, all the teachers and everyone, and not just the parents, to come to digital citizenship and learn more about it. But like, you have to have TikTok on your phone. You have to know how to use a Snapchat heat map. When we had the incident where they exploded the windows in the library at Middleton, I came to the police meeting here, they said they found out about it from a Snapchat that went to a Facebook, that went to a TikTok, that, I, it went through like three platforms. So I think all of the administration, the board, the parents, the teachers need to be literate at this stuff as well. I think that's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Matthew Glebe. I'm not aware, am I allowed to ask questions at this point?
So you are allowed to ask questions, but the board is not allowed to interact with you anyway? We can take in your information.
That's fine, okay. All right, so the first question, it was about some of the slides in the budget referred to life and safety. And I saw the facilities report that we're behind in some of our critical, like, reviews. I was going to ask, kind of in general, I've had this thought, what we could do to kind of make the school like more, schools more of a hard target? And I say that as, like, now I have a preschooler. I joined in like the 2018, before I had kids, just lived in the area, participated in the strategic plan. It's kind of cool to see that again. But I don't know, I think it'd be a good agenda item to revisit how to make schools hard targets in the future. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I noticed the thing about the facility on that, definitely probably a time right now to be leaning on safety as opposed to convenience. And on that note, there was something else with facilities. I've complained a little bit about some stuff that I find broken. So my daughter goes to Meyer, but before that I would, I lived by it, so I would walk in and notice like the seesaw was coming off the floor or whatever. So I'm happy to like walk up and just fix stuff, but I don't know if I'll get like in trouble. And I, and I really mean, like, I could just do it, if there's just some bolts that need to get put in, but it's been a couple months. So do we have a pipeline of some kind where I can report that? Because I've like called and left messages, and I don't know, they probably are like, I realize now, I didn't know this at the time, but when I said seesaw, people probably thought I meant like the application, when I was talking about like a literal seesaw that was coming off the ground. So that was another thing I just, if there's a pipeline of some kind, that's a little better to report it, so as not to cause you guys like a crazy backlog. I was going to request maybe a review of classroom sizes. I heard it used to be even higher, but, and I know that that's a serious budget concern, so, but whatever we could do in like a future, in the next 10 years, 15 years, to get classroom size down and kind of push that, I think that'd be really powerful. And then the last thing, I was just going to ask if maybe we should still just take the bridge loan, 0%. If someone offered you 0% right now, I think you would just take that cash, even if you can only have it a month. So I was just curious why we wouldn't just take it, just to be sure. If you do continue with that agenda item for board activities, let parents know if they could participate. My father, when I was at Devonshire, volunteered with chess club. I did a lot of chess. I was in like elementary school. I would be happy to do that, that'd be pretty fun. But something like that would be cool. So those are my comments. Thank you.
We will now move into the calendar review. Just want to let everyone know that the fin, the next finance committee will be Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM. We also have our district strategic planning kickoff on Wednesday, September 28th. It will be at Meyer School from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. One question, are we offering childcare for parents, just for people who may want to know?
We are working on it, but we have not completely confirmed.
Okay, it's a work in progress. Our last item, our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM. Is there anything anybody would add or have forgotten about the calendar review?
Something that's left off is our September 27th, when we have Heitner speaking, and we'll be speaking about digital citizenship, as well as several things that have come up here in reference to using the internet.
And we will have childcare at that event.
And I apologize, we will have Lori, starts with a P, from the library, Skokie Library. Lori Pormian, she is part of, thank you, she is a parent, and she is part of the Skokie Library during the event on September 27th. If parents bring their library card, she'll have books that they can actually check out at Meyer on digital usage.
I also just want to throw out another pub for coffee tomorrow, September 14th. Come get coffee. McCracken, here, come get yummy coffee tomorrow.
Next week, we will have it at Meyer, and then the following week is Middleton, and they all fall on a Wednesday. Thank you.
Middleton is the 27th.
And to clarify, that's free for staff, but paid for parents.
Staff only need to show their ID.
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Moved by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. This meeting's adjourned?
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.